It's six o'clock, so I will start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Pro Tem Fred Brink, I am substituting for Mayor Gary this evening as he is on official travel. And I call the December 7, 2021, remote meeting of the West Richland City Council to order at 6:00 P. M. Before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to read the virtual meeting ground rules and then call roll, please.
Right, thank you. Please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use, Mayor Pro Tem tonight. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you have joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video, and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant ID. Please call in with that ID as then your phone is associated with your video. Everyone will be muted until a designated comment period. And when the chair asks for public comments, if you raise your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call. Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Yeah.
Gail Brown? It's muted. Here we go.
Here.
Rich Buell?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
Kate Moran? I don't think she's joined us yet. And John Smart?
Here.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Councilmember Smart, I would ask you to lead the pledge of allegiance if you would be kind enough to do so.
My pleasure, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Smart. Council, we have an agenda before us and there will be one change to the agenda. Councilmember Smart has requested that consent agenda item six be be moved for discussion, so I would like to move it to eight A. Under ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings. So with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
I move to approve the revised agenda instead.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We have no presentations this evening. And now we have before us the consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 16, 2021. Resolution authorizing the interlocal agreement with Benton County for general equipment and or services. Amending the master fee schedule, water system development fee, sewer system development fee, and water connection hookup fee. Set public hearing date to consider petition for frontage waiver, Austin Drive. Motion to approve SR 224 Van Geesten Improvement Project Phase One. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute engineering services contract for well number two, J U B Engineers Incorporated. Motion to approve amendment three to the purchase and sale agreement for the old police station. Motion to authorize mayor to execute a community economic revitalization board loan reimbursement agreement with Benton Rural Electric Association. Motion to accept Harrington Road overlay project as complete. Motion to approve mayor to execute fuel tax grant agreement with Transportation Improvement Board for the North 62nd Avenue Pavement Preservation Project. Motion to confirm planning commission appointee. Motion to authorize mayor to execute low income household water assistance program vendor agreement. And resolution establishing the American Rescue Plan Act Funds Utility Assistance Program. And motion to authorize mayor to execute mid Columbia Library Contract Amendment Three. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand. When I call on you, the city clerk will unmute you. Then please state your name and city of residence for the record and provide your comments. You may also press star nine to raise your hand if you're attending this meeting via telephone. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? I don't see anyone, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone.
Seeing there's no public comments, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent agenda?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, council. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now come to the first time for citizen public comment. If you wish to provide comments for items that are not on the agenda for this evening's meeting, please raise your hand. Once again, when I call on you, the city clerk will unmute you. And you will have three minutes to provide your comments. And once again, I kindly request that you begin by providing your name and city of residence for the record. Is there any members of the public would like to make a public comment? Stephanie, I do not see any. Do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
All right. Moving right along, then we come to ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearing. We have item eight A approving the 2022 legislative priorities. Councilmember Smart, you asked for this, I'd be moved off the consent agenda, so I will turn the floor to you to comment on this.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brink and council for entertaining the opportunity to discuss these legislative priorities, which this ordinance would ask for West Richland to support. So I'm sure you've all read through these. My concern is the last agenda item under those legislative priorities, which states, it's very short, I'll just read it for the public's awareness, it says property tax. The city supports the revision of the property tax cap to tie it to inflation and population growth factors, so that local elected officials can adjust the local property tax brought local property tax rate to better serve their communities. So that's not so thinly disguised to say that the city is proposing and promoting the idea that property taxes should be able to be increased to tie it to inflation and population growth factors, both of which are skyrocketing these days. So that elected officials, that would be us, can spend enough money to achieve the goals that the city and supposedly hopefully the community is expecting us to achieve. I have a problem with that in that it counters my basic premise of trying to control our spending to maintain it to a percentage with which it is currently bounded. In other words, you know, as the city grows, I understand our expenses grow. But so does our income, our revenue from property taxes of future homes and sales taxes and the like, right? So what this is asking is for the city to, for the is for us, the council, to support the idea that we should exceed that percentage of current event revenue and increase our proportion of spending compared to the value of our town. I would, I would point out that it's a misnomer to say that we are limited to just, you know, one percent tax cap or, or whatever the current tax cap is depending on our our current spend rate. I would remind council that our property is reassessed on a regular basis by the assessor's office. And I don't know about you, actually I do know about you. You are just like me, just like every other citizen in the West Richland. Our property taxes are going up tremendously just based on intrinsic value of our homes and our properties. So the tax cap already increases, so to speak. Not the tax cap, of course, you know, there's, it's semantics here. But we do give an extra amount of money every year as, as the years and decades roll on just because of the increase in value. So the way the system is set up, we should restrict our spending to the value, to a, to a given proportion of our overall net cities value. And, and I think that we're there. I think we've survived with the current, you know, rich income cap quite well, and I don't see the need, nor do I see the citizens desire to have our city exceed the current percentage of spending that we currently, that we currently do. I think it's incumbent upon us as a city. And by the way, this is, I'm, I'm not saying we haven't done a good job. I think we've done a great job of, of, of keeping our spending or, our spending low and our efficiency high. And I think we should be emphasizing that. I, I don't think we should be promoting to the state legislative action that allows us to take an even higher percentage from our, from our citizens' property tax over the year. So that's my, that's my concern with this, and it's why I brought it off the consent agenda. Hoping that maybe one of you can convince me otherwise, but as it stands, I'm not currently in favor of supporting that particular aspect of this legislative agenda, so I'll, I'll yield the floor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Smart. Before, I see Councilmember Bloom, Councilmember Brown, you have your hands raised. Before I, I call upon you, I'd just like to make one comment. The need to revise Washington State's property tax cap and the levy lift process have clearly been recognized as critical issues by members of both parties in the state legislature during the past several sessions. The city's position on this topic actually mirrors the 2022 legislative priorities developed by A W C's Legislative Priorities Committee, which I sat on as long as 25 other representatives from across our state in several meetings that we had this year. A W C advocates legislation which will provide local elected officials, you know, you and I, Councilmember Smart, as well as everyone else, the ability and the flexibility to adjust local property tax rates up or down to better address our community's needs and our citizens' priorities. Because it has been recognized that the current process has to change. So A W C's legislative priority in this topic is nearly identical. And the bottom line is that it'll, what we're doing here is aligning West Richland with A W C's priority, which if realized, places more control and accountability of property taxes at the local level, where I really think it belongs. So those, those are my comments. I'll call on Councilmember Bloom next.
Um, yes. That's what Smart, the, the reality comes down to is your property tax does not increase just because your assessment goes up. Our mileage goes down because your assessment went up. So the one percent is applied to the assessed value of the entire city. And so the city's property tax has always, you know, with the one percent cap, you know, over the years, I'm going on my 13th year on the council. It, it, it continues to diminish the value of the property tax. That's why we have reached out and used other things such as the utility tax, et cetera. Property tax used to be our major way of, of, you know, funding the police, et cetera. And so we've added over the years, we've added the cable tax and utility tax, and we had to go out and have another tax to, to fund the library. It's, it's actually counterproductive to allow it to, to shrink as much as it is. And so I, I fully support what A W C is doing because a one percent increase in your property tax across the entire city, especially cities that aren't growing. I mean, yes, we have had great growth, but what happens with growth? We have more, more demand on the police and greater requirements for the resources of the city. So you know, one percent cap that, that was imposed by the, by the referendum years ago has, has really been detrimental to the cities. And it shrinks their taxing base. We're elected to, to control the tax and not just simply, oh, well gee, we have more money, we can go spend it. It's a question of, do, do we want to actually provide the services and so I, I fully support the wording that's in there now.
Councilmember Brown?
Hey, I wasn't here when you did this conversation, but I, I'll just add a couple of things. A W C did have these on our, on their list, but they do affect the city, so you might want to put them on there just as a, okay, W C, this is my second. And that was the Open Public Meetings Act. We need some new verbiage around that so we can continue the Zoom and the in-person. So they'll need to get some language together for that. And I think I talked about the different, the changes in the Growth Management Act that went through or will finish going through this session. That will need to, so that will need to be changed. And, and they talk here about, you know, sickening money to help with that. So I, I would just, you know, those two will affect us more than some of the rest of them. I, I don't have anything to say about the property tax.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Yes. I just want to make sure that I understand correctly. When we're talking about property tax and we're talking about the percentage, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So Councilmember Bloom, you were saying that when we raise the percentage, it doesn't raise the actual amount. I, I'm, I'm not quite sure that I understood that. Erin's got her hand up, and I feel like she was going to be able to explain some of what I might have questions on.
May I, may I interrupt and let Finance Director Gwynn jump in and, and hopefully address your question?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So one of the things on the one percent cap, so it takes, our one percent cap is on existing homes. So what we do is we have the assessed valuation from the prior year. It's not even assessed valuation. It's from the tax dollars that we collected the prior year. And we can only increase those dollars by one percent on existing homes. So, and this is, and we kind of went over it on the last meeting with the adhorum tax. We do it, we have to do it every year. So it's the existing home. And then essentially, when the county comes through and changes our valuation, our levy rate goes down. So, and then that new levy rate is now the, the rate that the new homes are charged. So M R S C actually has a really good page on this because it's a pretty complex issue on trying to understand how property tax is calculated. But basically, one of the examples in there is they said, okay, we have one property in this city. So it's very simple. One property initially, it's a hundred thousand dollars. And it has a levy rate of two dollars per thousand assessed value. So it is going to pay two hundred dollars of city tax. So then the next year it comes around and we can only increase that two hundred dollars by one percent. So two hundred and two dollars total is what we can assess that property. But the value of the property went up to a hundred and fifty thousand. So now, uh, I think, was that the example? Or maybe? Let me see where I'm at. So, but the value goes up to two hundred thousand after the first year. We can only assess two hundred and two dollars. So now the levy rate is a dollar one. So you can see the drastic effect of that change. So just because your valuation goes up doesn't necessarily mean that your tax is going to go up significantly. Now, it can change, so we start getting more complex and we start adding multiple homes in here. And let's say another example, we have three households in the city. Again, we're looking at, um, what was it? Fifty thousand? Hang on one sec. We'll do two houses, fifty thousand for each home. So again, we're at that hundred thousand mark. Two, uh, two dollar levy rate. So again, two hundred dollars. One percent increase of two hundred and two total. But one of those valuations of the home went up to a hundred and fifty thousand. The other valuation went up fifty thousand. So again, we're at two hundred thousand total valuation for the city. At the new levy rate is a dollar one. So now, one home, which was going to pay, uh, last year paid a hundred dollars, is now going to pay a hundred and fifty, one fifty, where the other one last year paid a hundred dollars is now going to pay fifty dollars and fifty cents. So one went up fifty percent, the other one went down fifty percent. So it's really a complex issue and for it to come in and say that, you know, give it blanket statements like your property value goes up, it really is a change in allocation factor. So it's a change in what the value of your neighbors are doing as well as yours. So there, it's a little bit more complex. And then when we add the one percent in there, I think West Richland's been fairly, I don't want to say lucky, but we've sustained fairly well because of our growth. So growth actually helps because we're not sustained to a total of a one percent increase. We're able to take increase from the added, added properties in there, even though it's at a lower levy rate. So I think, um, I don't know, I know this year our levy rate dropped about nine percent. It's estimated to drop nine percent from a dollar fifty-two last year to about a dollar forty-one this year. So it's a pretty complex issue, and I think that we've, West Richland itself has spared, but if we stop growing as much and inflation does increase because it's not just controlling our spending and because there are things that we can't control, like when the price of fertilizer goes up. So we can't, you know, to fertilize the parks. It's like we, it costs us more to do business, just like anywhere else. So this is our way of trying to keep up. Anyway, that's my two cents. Hopefully it helps you understand, but it's a pretty complex issue. Like I said, M R S D has a pretty good layout of it. I know Department of Revenue also has a pretty a good, like, overall, like, uh, because we're capped in certain ways. Like, I don't think we can go above two dollars and ten cents as a rate. That's a state cap. I don't think they've talked about changing that. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Number Moran?
Yes, so, um, then what I'm wondering is what it says right now, that we support the revision of the property tax cap to tie it to inflation and property growth factors, so that we can adjust the local property tax rate to better serve our communities. What that's saying, the revision of the property tax cap and tying it to inflation and population growth factors, is that going to mean that we support allowing the percentage collected of property taxes to go up? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the, what we actually want it to do? And what it says, does that match? And does it allow for things to happen that we don't want to happen?
I, I will take a stab at that question, Councilmember Moran, since I did sit on the Legislative Priorities Committee. All this priority is trying to do, and all the A W C is trying to do is to move property tax to local authority control. That's the bottom line. And allow local officials to adjust property taxes, local elected officials to adjust property taxes as needed to address community needs. They may very well go down in some cases. Property taxes don't necessarily spiral up. But the bottom line is right now the control is not vested in the cities. If this priority is in fact realized, the control will be more in, there will be greater control vested in the cities and with local officials to control property taxes. That's the bottom line in a nutshell.
Okay, so then what we're just trying to say with this is, we're saying we want local control of property taxes, not to have it be the state saying what we can and cannot do when it comes to property taxes, not having it use their complicated formula in order to figure it out. Is that what this is saying then?
It's a little bit beyond that. What we want is the state, the legislature, as it's currently written, the laws as they're currently written, limit the amount, the total value of property tax that can be collected by jurisdiction. That's essentially what you get down to. So we are looking to have more local control over that particular issue.
Okay, thank you.
And, and when did I hit it on target there or am I a little bit off?
I, I, that's, that was what I was wanting to know then. I will say that the items that Councilmember Brown suggested that we add, I would love to see those added. Will we have a chance later in the year to, um, to add to the legislative priorities? I know that it's not all inclusive, but.
Yeah, I think that would be a matter best taken up in a workshop, a future workshop, where we can sit down and address that issue.
Okay, well, if we are unable to add those now, I would love to have us look into that further, but thank you for the clarification on the property tax issue.
All right, welcome. Councilmember Smart, you have an additional comment?
Yes. I just wanted to point out that it, it does undoubtedly give local officials more control. That's what it seems to be asking for, but we just want to really make sure it's clear that we can reduce our property tax take right now. We, we don't have to charge what we do. I mean, if, if we could, and obviously we haven't chosen to do that. I've watched council for a long time, longer than I've been on it, and I have yet to see an opportunity to spend money that hasn't actually been spent, right? So it, it just is an axiom of, of government in the United States these days in the modern era, that if there's money to spend, it'll get spent. On good things, I'm sure. But nevertheless, what I see this is as, I see this as a opportunity to allow local officials to exceed what is currently limited and to increase the property tax. It's the bottom line. I understand it's a complicated formula, and some people may see increases and decreases depending on that formula, but but the bottom line is that it is removing a cap that the residents of Washington State put in place a long time ago because of the problem that is absolutely endemic, which is that if we have the ability to spend the money or get which is that if we have the ability to spend the money or get more money, we will do it collectively as a group, as a city. I mean, it's, it's, it's just, I'd, cite me an example. Anytime, anywhere in the last five decades where you've seen government officials, that would be us, decide that, well, we don't really need that extra money. Let's give it back. Let's reduce the taxes. I'd love to see that happen in this city. But we can do that now. We don't have to advocate for this legislative, legislative action in order to do that right now and today. And I'm satisfied, right? I'm hopeful that we can at least hold it apart. And I understand inflation and I understand how growth works. And I understand how, a lot of how the formula, Glenn, by the way, thank you very much for that explanation. That was really good. That was very contributing. I understand that. But I also understand that if we need a significantly more, significant more amount of money, if we need to collect more tax for vital needs in this city, we have other ways to give it. And we've exercised those ways throughout the years with some success. And I, I just think that, and I'm not looking at just West Richland. This is, what we're doing here is we're asking to advocate for this to be applied across the state. And I, I just, I just don't agree with it. I think there are other ways to raise money that are just as transparent, if not more so, and that involve the public even more than this would, you know, individual bond issues or, or increases in taxes and utilities or whatever the case may be. Richland was a great example. You know, they wanted a bridge across the Yakima River. It was publicly discussed. It's very, very expensive. And they came up with a, with a car tab tax. And I, nobody likes a tax. Nobody likes to pay for the things they want. But they did, they made that decision and, and I applaud them for that. That's, that was a great exercise in local city government getting something they thought they needed. And I think it will pay off. It's probably going to give a good return on investment. So this issue though, here where we just, you know, allowed the property tax rates to, to steep upwards over the course of time, even though there's another limit yet we have yet to run into. I just think it's a dangerous idea and I don't support it. But I do appreciate the conversation. And Glenn especially appreciate your pitching in there to give some of those examples. So very helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Smart. As we discuss issues of revenue and what we need, that would certainly be a topic as we put together the, the next biannual budget as we start that process next year. So thank you. Councilmember Bloom, you have another comment, sir?
Yeah, I mean, the, I want to bring back the issue that we had with, with what the county commissioners were trying to do to Ben Franklin Transit of cutting their, I mean, they, they, their only source of local revenue is sales tax. And they wanted to cut, cut the sales tax input by sixteen percent just simply to get them under financial control. You can't, you know, this reverse is happening here with the one percent cap. You're really, for a community that's not growing, you're starving to death. Because what if your salary was only allowed to increase one percent by state? That was it. And you, you would, you would fall out of sync with your, your, your living. And so all we're doing is allowing the total tax to collected to not be constrained by the one percent increase. And yeah, we've increased, like I said, we've increased utility tax. Utility taxes now our main taxing vehicle. Why is that fair? That's actually regressive against people. People buy, build a beautiful home and highly energy efficient, whereas a person that's in a low efficiency, they're getting hit more. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying hard to try and get the, the board members on the transit board to be more proactive with what the, what the actual budget is. And that's something we look at. So if, if it isn't a question of are we wasting money, both citywide or not, but do we have the resources to, to do what we want to do? And we don't. We don't have the resources we want for our parks. We don't have the resources we want for our roads. Why? Because basically, property tax has fallen to being a much smaller percentage of our potential income. And that's because of the one percent cap. So I'll leave it with that. But I, I think of a small community that's not growing, they've got to be starving to death.
Thank you, Councilmember Bloom. I see no other hands raised. So I would ask council for a motion on approving the 2022 legislative priorities.
I move to approve the 2022 legislative priorities as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. At this point, council, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Please say nay. Thank you. All right, we have no unfinished business for this evening, for new business tonight. I know that Mayor Gary would like to personally deliver these messages, but they are the identical ones that I would deliver, that I wish to thank both Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Buell for their dedicated service to West Richland. Since the December twenty-first council meeting is going to be canceled or has been canceled, this is the last council meeting of their respective terms. Councilmember Brown has served on the West Richland City Council since nineteen ninety-eight, dedicating twenty-four years of service to our community. Councilmember Buell joined the council four years later and has devoted twenty years of his life in service of our city. So we do have a desk clock and a commemorative coin to present to both Councilmember Buell and Councilmember Brown. But as you might expect, due to supply chain issues, they've not been received yet. So once they are received, Stephanie will reach out to you and present them to you personally. But I, I really want to thank both of you for your service to the community. You have made a spectacular devotion of effort and you have clearly made a difference in the direction that the city has gone in during your term. So I'll call on each of you. Councilmember Buell, would you like to make any comments, please?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brink. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, I wrote a couple of things down. In two thousand and two, when I took office, gas cost a dollar and thirty-six cents per gallon. New house cost a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Stamp cost thirty-four cents. Friends and Twenty Four were the top TV shows. Russell Crowe's movie, A Beautiful Mind, won the Best Picture. The president was George W. Bush. The Arizona Diamondbacks were the World Series champs. And closer to home, West Richland's population was nine thousand and seventy-one people. My oldest daughter had just turned one. My first meeting was on January the seventh, two thousand and two. It was a Monday. We met on Mondays back then. It started at seven o'clock. And that was meeting number one. And I tried to remember to keep track of how many meetings that I would attend as a member of the city council. For the first two meetings in office, I did not comment on any of the resolutions or ordinances that were being voted on. My first statement was during the third council meeting, when we were voting about whether to put up a wall along Keene Road from Kennedy to what is now the roundabout. Before us was a recommendation to put up a noise deadening wall on just one side of that road. There were studies done that showed one side of that road would probably get more vehicle noise than the other. And as you can imagine, residents on the other side of that street, where a wall wasn't proposed, were not too happy. I talked for several minutes and made a passionate plea, arguing that it just wasn't possible for one side of a street to be louder than the other. I urged the council to reconsider approving that recommendation. The vote was taken and I lost six to one. Ultimately, a wall was built on the other side of that street. It is now called a beautification wall. Since then, we've had votes on everything from roosters and roundabouts to pot stores and parking, to gambling and golf courses, to stoplights and speed limits. We've had full council chambers with dozens of people offering comments and Zoom meetings with nobody online except the council and the department heads. There were times when all of us agreed on issues and times when we could argue back and forth for hours or even multiple meetings about the same topic. I've been sued and threatened during my time in office, but also given kudos by other people who were impressed by my knowledge about sewage treatment plants and utility rates. Regardless of my stance or the stance of anyone else on the council who is voting, each person who has been elected to represent the city has done so with the desire to make West Richland a better place than then when they were first elected. We didn't and we still don't all have the same vision for the community, but we are all passionate about getting there. As I leave office, I look back on some of the things that have happened in West Richland since that first meeting in two thousand and two. I've been here for our first stoplight, our first roundabout, our first elevator, the first retail chain store. We've got several new schools in the school administration building. There's a new municipal services building. We have a new Yakima River gateway and a renovated racetrack. We have a state-of-the-art new police station opening soon. There are new businesses, dozens of new neighborhoods, hundreds of new homes, and thousands of new residents. I was elected twenty years ago to represent nine thousand and seventy-one people and now I'm representing more than seventeen thousand. There have been quite a few people who I've met on this journey who share the same passion to make West Richland a great place to live as each member of the city council does. During my tenure, I can count four police chiefs, three city managers, two public works directors, five community development directors, three city clerks, six finance directors, and two city attorneys. By my count, there have been twenty-three council members who have held seats since I was elected. With apologies to anyone who I may have missed, there have been Terry Cress, Julie Jones, Nancy Aldrich, Ken Dobbin, Dale Jackson, Matt Bleish, Merle Johnson, Patrick Conley, Patrick Wolf, Frank Wolf, Byron Martin, Mark Hanneman, Tony Benegas, Donna Noski, Brent Gary, Bob Perks, Ken Stoker, Ron Hayden, David Fettow, Richard Bloom, Kate Moran, Fred Brink, John Smart, and Yale. I want to thank all of my previous colleagues for their service and for my fellow council members tonight. I thank you for your commitment to our city and for the compassion you have brought to City Hall. There have been four mayors since I was first elected. Jerry Peltier was in office when I arrived, followed by Dale Jackson, Donna Noski, and now Brent Gary. Brent, I know you're on the line tonight. You and I haven't always agreed. I'm still mad at you for that one meeting where you made all of us go through two hundred and two potential action items with green or red cards to determine if we were to take action on them or not. But you are still a tremendous leader, a coalition builder, and the right man for the job of running our city. Thank you for all you've done and are continuing to do on behalf of our city and our residents. To the residents of West Richland, it has been my honor and my privilege to have represented you for the past twenty years. I thank you for allowing me to serve in this position since two thousand and two. In closing, I told you that I attended my first meeting on January seventh, two thousand and two. Unofficially, as I leave office, by my count, I have attended approximately one thousand, three hundred and forty-five events as a member of this council. And that daughter of mine who had just turned one when I took office, she's a sophomore in college now who celebrated her twenty-first birthday on Saturday night. Thank you all and best wishes. Mayor Pro Tem Brink, back to you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Buell. Councilmember Brown, would you care to make any comments?
Sure, I, I knew Rich would make this speech. So I'm just going to add four years to whatever he said and make this very short. But I would thank Ross though, because my first year, we discussed the light on thirty-eighth. And as I'm leaving, it is finally getting put in. That's all, you know, thanks to everybody that I've worked with, all the council members that Rich talked about, all the different staff. It's been a big journey and, and we are getting bigger. So thanks, everyone, and that, that's really all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Brown. I know it doesn't come across well on Zoom, but I would ask my fellow council members and staff just to give a round of applause to both Councilmembers Brown and Buell. Thank you very, very much. We now move to the second citizen public comment period. If there is anyone who wishes to provide comment, please raise your hand when I call on you. The city clerk will unmute you and then give your name, city of address, and provide your comments, please. I see Councilmember-elect Stoker has his hand raised.
Yeah, so I guess first off, I would also like to offer my heartfelt thanks to Councilmember Buell and Councilmember Brown. It was a pleasure serving the voters you've been for. So wish you all good, good luck in your future endeavors. Secondly, sorry, there wasn't an opportunity asked for for public comment on the legislative priorities. I just wanted to say that I kind of hoped that this would have been postponed one council meeting with two new members coming on board and exactly for the twenty-twenty legislative session. It would have been, I think, appropriate to allow it to be voted on at that time. But it is what it is. So thank you for your efforts and back time now.
All right, thank you, Councilmember-elect Stoker. Any other citizens care to make public comments? If not, we'll go to the staff and council reports. If a staff member has a report they'd care to make, please raise your hand. We can start with Chief Majetic.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, audience. Just to catch up on a few things, we haven't had an opportunity to brief council for quite some time. Most recently, I've offered extended offers to city council members to take a tour of the new police facility. And all council members took me up on that offer, with the exception of Councilmember Bloom. And I hope that you all were able to see what we've been able to accomplish, you know, with the, being an idea four years ago to walk into the door. And that it's on time, on budget, and as promised to the voters. I want to, you know, thank everybody to get us to this point. We're going to have a ribbon cutting and community open house, January twenty-fifth. We'll put out the details to that on the website and Facebook. Eleven o'clock AM will be the ribbon cutting and then the community open house, which isn't so ceremonial and allow people to actually tour the facility more thoroughly will be from five to seven thirty. But again, I'll put that out on Facebook and our website. Very anxious to show it off as something the whole community can be proud of. The ribbon, the, this last weekend, we participated, and I know the city staff did as well, in bikes and type for tikes at the Three Rivers Convention Center, where thousands of bikes were put together. Eight representatives from the police department. I didn't get the final count from the city of municipal service. I think Stephanie will provide that. But it's a great turnout, a great event, and we look forward to doing it again next year. This coming Saturday, we're having cops and kids at the Richland Walmart. And if you're not familiar with that event, that's where, through the turn of order of police and other charitable organizations, we're able to get gift cards up to over a hundred dollars per child for mostly families that are struggling this time of year to allow them to buy not only gifts for themselves, but for their families. Members of the police department, so we're going to pair up with Richland, will be there this Saturday to take part of that. And it's a great event that we do every year. And in closing, this Friday, we have one of our newest officers graduating the Police Academy in Spokane, Cassandra Martinez. I look forward to bringing her to council in the first council meeting in January for introductions. And with that, Mr. Brink, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Community Director, Mr. Mendenhall.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem Brink. I appreciate being recognized.
I appreciate being recognized. So I just want to give a year-end update. I want to report to you this evening on the amazing work that performed by the CD and Public Works staff this year. We have been setting records, not by small amounts, but absolutely blowing the top off. To date, we have issued 325 new residential permits. Last year, we issued a total of 230, so that's a 41% increase year to year. To date, we've performed 7,175 inspections. Last year, we did a total of 4,739, so that's over 51% increase year over year. And I'll put that in a little bit more perspective, in 2019, we performed 2,798. So thank you for adding additional inspector for next year. That's definitely helped alleviate some of that substantial increase that we're seeing. This year, staff worked on developing commercial development or design and development guidelines, land use matrix, the 2021 comprehensive plan amendments, laid the groundwork for the Lewis and Clark Ranch Master Plan, and continues to work on the Parks Plan update, which we should have ready for you early next year. This year, we welcomed the new Circle K in the bombing range Paradise Business District and permitted Sun Market and Firehouse Substore here next to City Hall and the Belmont Business District. They're expecting to open in February of 2022. We also have permitting for an urgent care and dog grooming facility next to the Giza Building on bombing range in Paradise Business District. We believe that they will be pulling permit shortly and will likely begin construction in the first quarter of next year. Seeing these commercial businesses are a great sign for economic development in the city. I've been getting more phone calls from businesses kicking tires and on other vacant lands here within the city, so I'm hopeful that I'll be able to share more in the coming months. Other businesses that have purchased land and are working towards building in West include Frank and Sons Collision, Apple Credit Union, and just approved by council tonight, we're excited to have Betnaire move next to the racetrack and police station properties. All these businesses bring daytime jobs and more businesses to West Richland. This is just the beginning. Earlier this year, council approved a lease agreement with Red Mountain Event Center, and the Event Center folks were able to put together in very short order the Fall Classic. The Fall Classic race brought over 3,000 people to West Richland that shocked and stayed locally here in the tri-cities. I want to thank the mayor and council for your support and vision you provide for economic development. You have been willing to work with businesses to locate in the Belmont Business District. And you hold the vision for that area. You helped lay the groundwork for Betnaire to come to West Richland to help facilitate events at the Red Mountain Event Center. Without your support, none of this would have been successful, so thank you for all that you do. I want to thank my staff and Public Works on their work and diligence this year on getting the permits out in a timely manner. They've been working tirelessly to keep up with the demand and keep all of the wheels on the bus. It's been, it hasn't been easy, and they deserve significant gratitude for pulling it off this year. We would not have been able to do it without the team that has been put together. They're all a cut above. I want to wish you all a happy holidays and a Merry Christmas. This year has been fantastic one for the records, and I'm full expectation that next year will be more record-breaking numbers. So take your vitamins and put your seatbelts on, we're going to have one heck of a ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minden Hall. A city clerk, Stephanie, do you wish to make some comments?
I just have a couple of updates. Councilmember Smart had inquired about the status of the council chambers and having hybrid meetings. So currently, the state proclamation requires that any in-person meeting must have an online component, and so at this time, our council chambers does not have that capability. But we have inquired with the vendor, I have met with them, they're working on obtaining the necessary equipment, and they're estimating that mid-January, they will be here to install that equipment. So hopefully, first quarter of 2022, if the council wishes to switch to hybrid meetings, we would have that capability. The second update, Councilmember Moran had inquired about where the procedure for assigning committees and boards, that's actually found in the municipal code, it's section 210. It gives that authority to the mayor, and so that would be where you could find that. And then scheduled for the second meeting in January will be the review of the council subcommittees and outside committees. So if some of the new council members might be filling in for the exiting council members or an opportunity to switch your committees at that time. And then I also did want to apologize for the classic Christmas, here's your gift on paper that you didn't get in person, and hopefully, it's not setting a precedent for the rest of your holiday season. Hopefully, those will get shipped soon, and I'll be able to present those to you, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Buell, in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Roscoe Slade.
Thank you, Mayor Tom Brink. Just a quick update, so I've got a tour tomorrow with the Department of Ecology. They're going to bring some of their engineers out of their stormwater. We've got some wineries that would like to expand. They have user agreements with the city, but the way that they, they're limited by our MPDS permit for our wastewater treatment plant that's behind the golf course, even though they discharge to our I plant. And so they're limited to 5% of that capacity, which limits their BOD loading, which is the constraining factor for these wineries. And so increasing our user agreement to allow them to discharge more to our I plant triggers them to obtain a permit from ecology. Short way to put it, that permit from ecologies for our wineries, which are larger but not in the, when you look at other industries, potato processors or those kinds of things, what they discharge to us is nowhere near at that volume. It would add $17,000 each year in permit costs for the wineries in West Richland, which is nearly what they pay us to just to treat their wastewater in a given year. So the meeting tomorrow is to look at how they, we can increase their loading limits to our I plant without making them considered a significant industrial user in ecology's mind, requiring a duplicate permit. They already have user agreements that limit their discharges. We've done this for a number of years. The I plant was built six, seven years ago, but we've been managing winery waste for, you know, better than 15 years. So hopefully, that will give them some flexibility and obviously, don't want those wineries to have to pay a $17,000 a year permit. So anyway, that's tomorrow. And then, yeah, I was expecting a lot more statistics and stuff from Rich, so I mean, we all knew it was coming. The guy keeps track of stuff, you know. It has been a pleasure, sir, working with you for the last 20 years. I started here at the city in July of 99, became Public Works Director on January 1 of 2002. So one of your statistics is wrong, Rich, you've been stuck with me your whole time as Public Works Director. So you may have had multiple other directors, but you were stuck with me for 20 years, which I figured he would give you, that was 7,305 days or 175,320 hours of service to the city. I won't go into the minutes, but it's over 10 million. So it's been a pleasure. Gail, also a pleasure working with you. Out of your 24 years here, I had the pleasure of 26 and a half, 20 as the Public Works Director here. It wasn't easy in the early years. We dealt with a lot of issues, growth pains, water sewer capacities, to the extreme where we had water sewer moratoriums that didn't allow growth. Both of your leadership worked through that. I remember times when Bon Range had more gravel than asphalt, and so we were able to work through those. And, you know, most of the roadways in town have been expanded, rebuilt for capacity, and that just doesn't happen without your leadership. So I do appreciate both of you. It's a huge commitment to put 20 years in, 24 years in, to a city to come to these meetings every Tuesday night, and then when you get community development thrown in those workshops on the off Tuesdays, it makes it rough. So I do appreciate it. Looking forward, Gail, to working with you and your promotion with Good Roads Association at the state level, so I'll get to continue to work with you through Good Roads, so that'll be great to have an advocate at the state level that will be looking out for West Richland. And then, Rich, looking forward to enjoying some Cougar football with you in the future and additional apple cup wins. That's just, you know, go Cougs, so that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Slade. I'll now turn to council. If there are council members that wish to make a report, please raise your hand. Councilmember Bloom, you're up.
Well, you know, I expected Rich to also have the statistics of how long Roscoe has done reports over the last 20 years. But anyway, how many hours we have listened to his updates? Like I said, I got on a plane yesterday morning at 5:00, and your time, it was 5:00 in the evening, and I got off the plane at 2:30 this afternoon, so I'm a little groggy. I think that's, that's no red eye. I will, because of my travels, Chief Majetic, I will, I will wait a little while. I'm going to self-quarantine. I've been through a few countries along the way, but I have to say that if you do get a chance to get to Dubai, Dubai is the most beautiful example of a city I've ever seen. And it is, you know, it's not, it's not controlled by the city, it's controlled by pride in the city and the people that build the buildings. And it's, you know, the thing that I would like to say is, we don't have to control things as a city. One of the reasons I'm on council, and now I'm the oldest council member coming up in January, the longest-serving council member, because obviously, Mayor Gary jumped off a few years ago. But the key comes down to is, one of the reasons I got on, the mode of a city government is not to be a homeowners association. We should promote individualism, and unfortunately, although I did get up at 4:30, I missed the vote on, and I would have voted against the, the building code or standards that would be what was presented last week, because it isn't up to the city to set those standards, it's up to the community. And there's a big difference there, and I think Dubai has that aspect, that it is pride in that city itself, in investing in that city. But anyway, I will be, I am back. I've, I'm getting used to having Q-tips up my nose. I've undergone at least, I think it's seven, it may have been eight tests so far, and I'll do another one a little bit later this week, make sure I didn't pick up anything as I flew through Ethiopia on the way back. But, yeah, I have to say, it was, it was, it was not scary other than the fact that COVID tests are, have a 1 in 50 giving you a negative positive, and 28 people on our ship found that out as they were left in Crete. So, you know, hopefully, we'll get used to what COVID means, but I can tell you, there's a lot of hassles in traveling, but it is relatively safe to do it. You just have to be willing to put up with the administrative stuff that's going on around the world. So with that, I thank you, I'm back in town. Bye.
Thank you, Councilmember Bloom. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you very much. First, I definitely would like to extend my thanks to Councilmember Buell and Councilmember Brown. Your experience on council has really been beneficial. I've been able to ask you guys questions about things, and you know the answers, and if you don't know exactly the answer, you know who to ask the question to. I appreciate that, and please don't go too far, you know where all the skeletons are buried. And I will say that, you know, as much as you dislike the meeting, Councilmember Buell, I've got to say, I mean, I haven't been on council long, but I feel like that's probably one of the longest-running gags so far that we've had with the cards, the green cards being flashed. But thank you both so much for your time, your experience, and please, 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 don't just go away and never do anything with us again, especially you, Gail, since you're on Good Roads. I would also like to extend a thanks to our officers and to everyone that made sure that Thanksgiving went off without a hitch with the least amount of injuries or incidents at all. Thank you very much for that, and hopefully, everybody that celebrated Hanukkah had a great Hanukkah, and that everyone that's celebrating Christmas and Kwanzaa and Festivus and all of the other holidays that are coming up, I hope that everybody has a very good time at those with whoever they call their family. And I would like to say that Dubai, yes, is awesome. I don't know if you had a chance to ski on their indoor ski, but I did not, but it was really fun watching everybody do that. And you know, they do have a spit test now for the COVID test, so you don't have to have them shove things up your nose.
I never was offered a spit test.
Well, you should start asking for it, because I don't think they offer it first. I think they just expect everybody to take the up-the-nose deal, but you could do the spit test now. There are a couple places around here especially that do that. But in the end, I hope that everybody has a wonderful holiday season, and if you have not gotten your booster shot, they do have it available in a lot of different places. They have the shots available, the vaccines, first and second, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson for the folks who want those available on a lot of different places. Let's try and minimize any issues that we might have with the spread and try and get this under control and have a good one. I would like to mention, as far as things that I've been to in attendance as a council member, the BF Cog meeting, I did attend that on November 19th, and got to say that West Richland has been one of the few that has continually had somebody at the meetings for BF Cog. There are a lot of times where we haven't met Quorum, where there have been other governmental entities that have not had somebody show up. So I'm hoping that the other organizations choose somebody that does manage to show up so that we can get Quorum and have things happening. And we did talk a little bit about the Brownfields Grant that is available. So if anybody would like that information about the Brownfields Grants that are available, it's the 2021 EPA Brownfield Assessment Coalition Grant. It's pretty interesting, and a brownfield isn't what I thought a brownfield was. I thought a brownfield had to be something that was blighted or had some sort of serious industrial thing happening with it, but a brownfield is really just if something was there and it has to be removed, that's what it sounds like a brownfield is to them. I can give you more information about that if you want. I can send the slides to Stephanie so that she can send them out, or if you've got any questions, ask me, or you could always contact Michelle with BF Cog, and she can fill you in on it. Other than that, everybody have a good one. Thank you so much, Councilmembers Buell and Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember Moran. Councilmember Fettow.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Brink. Yeah, I'll jump on. Thanks, Gail, thanks, Rich. It's been a pleasure I have been on council as long as Mr. Bloom has, but it's been a pleasure over the last several years to get to know each other. Hopefully, one day, when everybody's comfortable getting back outside, Rich, we can meet for tacos over Italianos. Hopefully one day when everybody's comfortable getting back outside, Rich, we can meet for tacos over Italianos. And then, congrats, Dan, welcome to Planning Commission. There are that I know of three on this screen in council who have to have come from Planning Commission. Myself, Kate and Fred, and I I'm not sure about the rest of council, but Eric, you got a good one there, I've known Dan for a little while, he'll do a great job for you. Thank you, Merry Christmas, everybody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fettow, Councilmember Smart.
Yes. So first, just a quick thanks, Chief mentions his his tour. And I I just think Chief's got a future in being a docent for museums or public facilities, they did a great job. Just want to publicly thank it for that, it is an impressive facility. Yeah, I I it's, it it looks like it should satisfy our needs and more for some time in the future, I'm sure, so. Very, very good tour there. I wanted to mention, just to publicly sort of mention amongst council and the public, but. You know, we did pass some, I think there was a ordinance or section, I can't remember the title. But it would have to do with gritted roads, gritted streets. And our planning director and council agreed that, you know, I think they, we clarified what gritted means. And that it means being connected from both sides and so forth, we also had a discussion about cul-de-sacs. And how they need to be allowed, however, that wasn't explicitly stated in that streets, which is one of the reasons I I had a problem with that. So I just want to remind everyone, I was over at my dad's house who lives on a cul-de-sac. A couple of weeks ago, and I noted that there were no less than seven children under the age of ten playing in the cul-de-sac. They had a bicycle ramp set up where they were jumping their little Beadex bikes about a foot into the air. And I just watched them for a while and thought, wow, that is why we have cul-de-sacs, you know? I mean, those kids were having the time of their lives out there pretending they were, you know, evil canibal or whatever. And that's not something you can do on even a residential street. So I just wanted to mention that in the planning of these new developments that we're undertaking right now, I certainly hope, and I'm not on the planning commission. But I certainly hope that we're considering that and encouraging our developers to have those little bump outs or these occasional cul-de-sacs. Not just where they're needed, but where they're desired, so that our future community has the benefit of that type of living space. For both our families, our children and others, so I would also like us to think carefully about. I visited a family who lives on a cul-de-sac and and the parking is an issue, and I would like us to consider in the future. You know, having what I would consider to be modified cul-de-sacs, where the frontage of each house isn't so small, so we're talking. Maybe an oval or a square or a different configuration that would that would work. I think some creative thinking is desired there, and I would like to encourage our developers to consider that, I just want to make that as a public statement. I asked, I did ask for an update on the on the council chambers on the emergency status. And and I, and Stephanie, thank you for addressing that, I'm curious to know more details, and I hope that you can provide those in future meetings, not tonight. As to what this council chamber is going to look like and what some of these modifications are. I I really don't want to go through it tonight, but I would like to also, I also inquired about. You know, this city council made a declaration of emergency on a city basis some months ago. And one of the things I'd like us to review, doesn't have to be tonight, maybe in a future meeting, soon, you can read it. Is to review for the public what conditions have to be met in order for us to relieve ourselves from a state of emergency. I'm not saying that we have, and I don't believe that we have to follow the state to this, the state can maintain a state of emergency for. As long as the governor and the legislature agrees, but as on a city basis. I'm having a hard time as every day goes by justifying why we need an emergency, now that doesn't mean we have to ignore COVID. And it doesn't mean that we have to engage in unsafe practices. It's just there's a difference between living cautiously with a well-known now virus about. Versus living under a state of emergency, which gives the mayor certain powers that he wouldn't otherwise have. And et cetera, et cetera, so my request is that we review as a council. What specific steps we as a city need to satisfy before we can remove ourselves. From a state of emergency. And you know, and if that removes us from the possibility of obtaining, you know, state funding or some sort of grants. I'd like to know what specifically what those are, so that's my request to the administration, specifically the mayor, I know he's not here. But I did write a note requesting that sort of in summary, and I'd still like to have that discussion maybe in the future, so it doesn't have to be that. Because personally, I'm not seeing the need, and don't confuse that with, I don't see COVID as being a serious disease. Two different things, and I I just don't see that how we're, what we're doing right now, besides limiting access to our facilities. We can do that without having a state of emergency, so enough said there. So on my list here, very, very quickly also, certainly do my thanks to Rich and Gail. It's been a, it's been a fun ride, Rich, I remember in one of my attending attendances of a city council meeting years before I ran for office. You know, you were tired of me complaining about something in the audience and and made this, and just challenged me to run for council. And I, I said, yeah, I'd love to, I just don't have time, you know, it's too much work, et cetera, et cetera. And I finally succumbed, and maybe much to everybody's chagrin, but but nevertheless. I do appreciate both of your efforts, and Rich, I really, I love the statistics you gave, that's awesome, I I don't think I'd be able to do the same. Especially after that many years, so it's been, it's been a good ride and I really appreciate both your service. And with that, I'll just wish everybody Merry Christmas, happy holidays and sign off.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Smart. In closing, we had some very good engagement this evening, thank you, council members and citizens for speaking up. I too wish everyone a Merry Christmas, wonderful and joyous holiday season. And of course, stay safe, and I look forward to what next year will bring for our city. Thank you, I will adjourn the meeting at ten, excuse me, ten, seven seventeen.
Do we have executive session?
And oh, no executive session this evening.
No, exactly, thank you.
Oh yeah, I should have mentioned that, all right, have a good evening.